So I will say, good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Today is November 12th. We stand and join us in the place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to ask that you join us in a moment of silent reflection as we remember White Plains former mayor Joe Delfino, who was a beloved public servant and community visionary. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to some brief comments from the board. Just a couple of things. I know that we celebrated Central Hispano's anniversary and they had a wonderful fundraising gala. They are excellent partners with us and it was just an honor to be there and to celebrate their achievements with them. A few of us made the Sports Hall of Fame. It's always nice when our students come back and are recognized for their achievements as well. And lastly, for Joe Delfino, you know, I was able to extend our condolences, as you said, Dr. Ricker. What a wonderful public servant. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't remember, did we share that we went to GW's family reading night? Was that last year?
Oh, yes, we did!
No, no, no.
Yes, we did!
So we did.
Yes, I forgot that one. We did go. Yes, yes, yes.
I couldn't remember if we shared that.
Yeah, so we all were at GW's family reading night, which was always a nice evening. And I think that's it. We just survived the first quarter.
Yeah?
Oh, NISBA had their annual conference down in New York City where we all were able to attend, Jessica and Craig and Cheryl. And we got to hear our seed groups present with this daily, is it? Yeah, that was great. It was a nice, the kids did an amazing job. I think Omar, excuse me, Brandon Archer had presented, a few other students. And we had people from other districts coming up to us to hear more about the seed program and how they could replicate it in their districts. And it's just, it was really awesome to see our students who organized the whole presentation. They worked us right through, like a little group session that they would run at the high school. And it was great to be part of it. And it was nice to see some other presentations. I didn't get to all of them. I know, Jessica, you probably could talk a little bit about some of them.
Yes, so I went to, can you hear me? I went to one on restorative practices. I went to one on how you can bring culturally responsive history lessons into schools. So taking White Plains history, all the rich history in White Plains, and bringing it into the classroom, which was really cool. I also went to the seed presentation, which was really interesting and awesome to see the students. I'm hoping to go to one of their meetings pretty soon, too. I signed up for their remind, so I know when they're happening. They had one already and I wasn't able to go, but I'm definitely looking forward to going to one soon.
Thank you. Can we do some brief comments?
But I just, I just have one. Rosemary's son got engaged.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
Okay, I'm done. I'm done.
So I'll mention a few of the workshops that I also got to at the NISBA conference. Also see Title IX, Artificial Intelligence Onboarding of New Board Members, DEI Workshop, and also asking good governance questions of the school board member. I also was able with my state board to attend the Council of Urban Boards of Education Conference and did some sessions on science of reading, student voice, equity, and engaging technology. Again, lots of AI kinds of things that we're seeing. And another local workshop I went to with Long Island University and Artificial Intelligence and the Future of the Work Course. Some really interesting presentations. I want to thank, well, just from the School Boards Association, they've been sponsoring some talks that some of us have been to on school budgeting and also on education law, on special education and scholastic athletics, and cell phone policies. And also the Keenan Bean is watching, again, their law workshops and they did something on Title IX and they're going to continue to do that during the course of the year. So we really appreciate that. They do our walk run in the school district and a lot of different school districts. PTA council met, volunteer, there was a discussion about, you know, how to volunteer, and also the Youth Bureau and all their different programs. And also the White Plains High School Hall of Fame.
Yeah, we were there.
Right, so, yeah, so we did that as well. And what was really nice, this particular year, two of the honorees were introduced by teachers. So that was, that was really a nice touch and congratulations to all the honored and to the committee for doing such outstanding work, you know, in finding the right candidates.
Thank you. The only thing that I would want to mention also is just to really recognize our PTA council. I was able to make both meetings so far this year. And I want to acknowledge and just recognize the work that they do for our staff and students. It is amazing how they get things together, how they execute. It's hard work, but they make it seem so much fun. So I just want to recognize them and say thank you on behalf of all of us here. So, we're good, right?
There were two other things I just wanted to mention. We went to the Veterans Day Assembly at Eastview, which was really beautiful. I've never been to it before because when my son was there, it was COVIDed, so it was really nice to be able to see it.
It's really an amazing program.
Yeah, and then I also was invited to go to the Church Street Student Farmers Market, so I bought some garlic there that the students. I didn't plan it yet because I had a crazy weekend with my dog. So, but I still have it, I still plan to plant it. Ms. LaShila gave me garlic from the garden to plant my own. And then I also went to the songwriter showcase this weekend at the high school, which is so amazing, by Mr. Polanco, who runs the club at the high school. I was just blown away. It was so amazing. Our students are so talented, it's kind of incredible. So I just want to shout that out because everybody should take a chance to go and see it.
Romeo and Juliet this coming weekend.
Yes.
Star-crossed lovers.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes. You're gonna go, man.
Yes, I know. Next, thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. Next, we'll have our superintendent's report.
Well, thank you so much. And welcome, MAS. It's MAS night, thank you so much for being with us tonight. And I'm always afraid to do this because there's no following them, but first I'd like to introduce our student ex-facile board members for their district-wide updates. Frosa, you're first, I think, right?
Do I have to move this?
If you move, right to you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight to celebrate the incredible work happening in our schools. As we look back on October, we see a powerful thread weaving through all our schools, a commitment to creating a positive, inclusive, and supportive community. At MAS, the theme for the month was all about being helpful. Through morning meetings and community circles, students reflected on how they can be kind, helpful, and considerate, which laid the foundation for some truly meaningful activities. Their Celebration of Unity Day was a particularly special moment, where the entire school wore orange to promote acceptance, respect, and kindness. It was not just a visual statement, it reflected the school's ongoing effort to build a community based on these core values. The day included a series of engaging activities where each class partnered with a buddy class for exciting cooperative projects. Students also took the anti-bullying pledge and worked together creating kindness cards and words of encouragement for all to access through their hallways. In addition to Unity Day, MAS hosted their annual Spooktacular, which turned out to be an enormous success. Hundreds of families and students took part in Halloween festivities, creating a festive fun atmosphere for all. Special thanks goes to MAS parent volunteers and the White Plains High School student volunteers who helped bring this event to life. And of course, the month concluded with the beloved Halloween Parade, where students and staff decked out in creative costumes and paraded through the school lawn while their families cheered them on. It was truly a celebration of school spirit and community pride. Over at Post Road School, there was a similarly strong focus on unity and inclusion. Post Road celebrated Unity Day by also wearing orange and engaging in read aloud sessions and activities that focused on kindness, respect, and inclusion. But one of the highlights was the creation of the Tree of Kindness. Each student and staff member wrote a positive message on an orange leaf, which was then displayed in the school hallway, creating a beautiful tangible reminder of the school's commitment to standing up against bullying. Halloween festivities at Post Road were also memorable, with trunk or treat, with the trunk or treat event that featured arts, crafts, treats, and even a laser light show. What a wonderful way to bring families together to celebrate the season in a safe, inclusive environment. Like MAS, Post Road also ended the month with a Halloween Parade, a remarkable sight with students marching proudly in their costumes as their families looked on. At Church Street School, community involvement and service were the heart of their efforts this month. Church Street's Harvest Market raised over $300, which will be donated to charity, a local charity, demonstrating how the school's students are not only learning about academic success, but also about giving back to their community. In another exciting event, Church Street was proud to send five 4th and 5th grade students to represent White Plains at the Battle of Books in Austening. Emmy, Declan, Leila, Aria, and Carter. Their enthusiasm, teamwork, and sportsmanship truly reflected the spirit of the event, and they did an outstanding job representing both their school and our district. One of the most beloved traditions at Church Street is the Return of Grandpas United, where grandfathers connect with students during lunch and recess. This intergenerational program fosters meaningful relationships and the students enjoy spending time with their grandpas, engaging in conversations and playing games. Church Street also spotlighted the value of acceptance this month, encouraging students to reflect on what it means to ensure that everyone feels safe and welcomed, both at school and in the wider community. At GW, students also engage in exciting hands-on learning. A particularly special moment this month was when students from Miss Tox's class received and planted tulip bulbs donated by the White Plains Beautification Foundation. Together with their teachers and teaching assistants, the students eagerly planted these bulbs, excited for the colorful display that will appear in the spring. GW also hosted a successful family reading night, where the theme of Read Around the World allowed families to share stories from diverse cultures and backgrounds, expanding the students' understanding of the world in a fun and interactive way. The event was a great success and showed how reading can be a bridge that connects families, cultures, and communities. At Ridgeway, we saw a month full of energy and community building. The school celebrated National Walk/Bike to School Day, where many students and families gathered at Gedney Park and walked or biked together to school. This event not only promoted physical activity, but also encouraged a sense of community and shared purpose. Ridgeway also celebrated Unity Day with students wearing orange and participating in writing poems and creating posters to send a message of kindness, inclusion, and acceptance. The PTA's trunk or treat event was another success, drawing large crowds for trick-or-treating, dancing, and enjoying the beautiful weather. They even set up a sensory-friendly area for families who would appreciate a quieter, more relaxed experience. Ridgeway's Girls on the Run team was also, also participated in a practice 5K led by members of the White Plains High School Cross Country Track. These girls are now gearing up for the Rockland Lake State Park event, and we wish them the best of luck as they continue to build their teamwork and leadership skills. This month, Ridgeway also honored our nation's veterans with a Veterans Day breakfast, where they hosted a group of two dozen veterans, many of whom are a part of the Ridgeway family. This special breakfast included a slideshow, a musical performance, and a parade. It was a touching tribute to those who served our country and a reminder of the importance of service, sacrifice, and community. In conclusion, all schools are making an active effort to build community and foster kindness and respect. From celebrating cultural diversity through family reading nights to supporting physical and emotional well-being with activities like the Girls on the Run program and Spooktacular events, it is clear that our schools are dedicated to making every student feel welcomed and supported.
To follow what Afrosa has said, in the middle schools, Eastview has exciting updates with community-based events such as the Fall Tiger Fest, the National Walk/Bike or Roll to School Day, the Code of Conduct Community Meetings, and a very successful Fred Gressler Walkathon, which raised over $6,000. Additionally, the student body has elected their student organization cabinet members, as well as student team leaders, with a student president, Malani Knox, vice president, Emilio Bediaco, secretary, Josephine Robbins, treasurer, Itzia Gonzalez, and leaders, Rosio Godinez, Charlotte Kruger, Emily Rubin, and Gianna Shaw. Moreover, student activities have been thriving, with many students participating in newspaper club, cooking club, flag football, Girls for Tech, art club, basketball club, yearbook club, international club, digital media club, soccer, and volleyball. Many students have also shown dedication by volunteering as student ambassadors during open house and guiding parents and guardians throughout the building. Some other highlights would be the Main Street Book Fair, where students were able to browse through books and open up new opportunities to discovery, as well as Subaru of White Plains and AdoptAClassroom.org coming together to provide Eastview with a grant that allowed for welcoming murals and more messages and decorations that enhance the school's hallways. Some upcoming events is the American Education Day on November 19th, where doors will be open to parent and guardian classroom visits and attend classes with the students from 1st to 4th period. Additionally, with the conclusion of the first quarter for all middle and high school schools, the Eastview's Honor Assembly will take place on Friday, November 22nd. At Highlands, students show their school spirit by participating in Spirit Week with fun themes such as Jersey Day, Twin Day, Color Day, Culture Day, and Pyjama Day. Further, 8th graders are excited about an upcoming field trip this Friday, where students will be able to go to the Chelsea Peers Athletic Club and engage in active activities like rock climbing, ninja courses, and batting cages. Additionally, the White Plains Middle School PTA has a fundraiser with Mabel's Labels, where supporters can buy personalized waterproof name labels while allowing students to maximize every event and enjoy each memory to the fullest. Moreover, some more news is the social committee came around delivering snacks on a cart for pick-me-ups at the New Highlands Investors Club, having great turnouts the past two Fridays. At Rochambeau, teachers and staff have participated in community building and restorative practices through the Superintendent's Conference Day Professional Development with the New York Peace Institute, as well as continued professional development by an IDE facilitator. As a result, 9th grade community building circles have started and will be regularly scheduled throughout the school year. Additionally, on November 6th, 22 families came for a day of classroom visitation and community building as a reimagined open house. Lunch was provided by Broadway Pizza and was coupled with an informative session from the Youth Bureau, El Centro Hispanico, and Westchester Community College. Many students are looking forward to the Rochester Institute of Technology's virtual college visit later this month, on November 25th. White Plains High School had many successful events in October. The homecoming celebrations were memorable, as the pep rally included fun games and even some healthy competition between students and teachers through a game of tug-of-war. The game later that night was a unifying moment, as the football team was victorious on their senior nights. Further, White Plains High School honored new inductees Sandra Galiff, Sean Bryant, Lara Rogowski, and Mara Gay into the White Plains High School Hall of Fame. Later in October, the high school saw a big turnout for the 2024 trunk or treat, welcoming roughly 500 families, who all showed off their costumes and received treats from around 25 different clubs that extended across the main entrance. The first songwriter showcase of this school year also had two successful cover concerts this past weekend, where students were able to show off their musicality through singing and instrumentals. Upcoming, many are looking forward to the fall play of Romeo and Juliet that will take place this weekend. Additionally, during this month and throughout the holidays, many clubs, such as Key Club, will be participating in Thanksgiving drives, as well as the annual holiday bazaar next Tiger Community Day. Last but certainly not least, the fall season sports have concluded with great results that exceeded expectations. In total, there are 28 league players. The girls tennis team were league champions, with Lily Damodas at number one in the section. This past weekend, the cross-country team participated in state qualifiers. And for our girls swimming and diving team, Saskia Eichmann, Neve Eichmann, Kelly Constantino, Riley Hendrickson, were all qualified for the New York State Championships. Throughout this season, the snack program was introduced, providing student athletes with free food and snack services after school. Within the next month, the department intends to initiate a tutoring program to help student athletes with their academic pursuits as well as their sports. This season was a great rebuilding period, and with these results, there is great anticipation for what the next seasons will look like. With that, winter sports starts next week on November 18th. And in preparation, students are taking part in offseason workouts in the weight rooms and looking forward to team tryouts. And on that note, this concludes the updates within our White Plains City School District schools. Thank you.
Thank you both. You see, there's no following that. Amazing. And they do it all themselves.
Great job.
They collected and pulled together. Thank you very much. What an amazing update.
There's a lot going on.
A lot going on. And I will say, welcome, everybody. And I would be absolutely remiss, we are sitting in the Michelle Schoenfeld Assembly Room, and we need to publicly, if you're watching, Michelle, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Michelle.
We also need to, again, just recognize and thank, as we enter into the season of gratitude, all yours should be gratitude, but season of gratitude to our veterans and everybody did, and thank you to the board for attending all of the various events as well. Really amazing, amazing displays, and all run, you know, by our children, with, of course, the guidance and support from our colleagues, but amazing to see little ones with their loved ones. We're sitting at a table this morning at Ridgeway, a little, couldn't have been more than four or five. And the slideshow is playing, and there's a lot of different types of pictures from all different times of service, different, World War I, World War II, you know, folks send the photos of their loved ones in, and the little boy keeps saying, "Is that you, Dad?" You can hear Dad saying, "Mine'll be in color." But really, just a great, a great event for our students, and so important for the kids, you know, to see, thanks, thank you, to see and to recognize that level of service. Also want to once again congratulate Dr. Han, Mr. Verulo, Ms. Martinez, everybody, and certainly our students for being recognized by the Business Council of Westchester for another, another year of winning the WIN Innovation Grant. Really great, really proud of them. Education Pathway students are very excited to participate in before care and after care to lend hand to some of those needed spots to hopefully help out, not just next year, but also this year with any wait lists. And so thanks to, again, to the Youth Bureau, Mr. Williams, and our students who are really interested in getting involved there. I also want to thank, just to see this today, but thank Mr. Williams, the Youth Bureau, Mayor Roach, and the Grandpas United. I just learned that we're going to be recognized at their first annual Grandpas United breakfast this year, which is really so kind. And it's very exciting, too, because remember when they were thinking about the idea of Grandpas United, an intergenerational experience to provide mentorship, support, and just, you know, connection to our students and grandparents? It's not just grandpas, it's grandparents throughout the city. And, you know, the question was, do you think this is something we can do? And of course, thanks to the board, the answer was absolutely. And it has been going strong ever since. And they have been talking with other youth bureaus around the country about ways that they could replicate this type of an intergenerational experience, because it is so valuable. So very excited and humbled to be part of that coming up in December. Also, I would like to just express my pride in our students who participated and presented at the New York State School Board's annual convention. It's a big deal. And they did it with class. I mean, you know, there's a room full, great attendance for a 9 o'clock.
Quite crowded.
A 9 o'clock session, right? After folks had already been in the city for a few days, and people really were excited to come out and to hear from our students. And they did it in such a way, as you mentioned, where they're facilitating, so we were part of that process. Really, really great stuff.
They really modeled.
They sure did. I am in the process of connecting with, after the first quarter is wrapping up, with all of our principals, and again, talking about our efforts to build community, and in the process to reduce situations of potential bullying, harassment, or intimidation all throughout the district. And I also want to thank the PTA council and all of the PTA units for leading that effort on unity and building community, which is so important. Special Olympics is underway, and thanks to Ms. Alcarton for giving an update this afternoon. The first away game was today, soccer. And we have two coaches, 10 TAs, who work with our students, both at the high school and middle school levels. And the season will end toward the end of December, and they'll have nine games.
That's great.
So, yeah, it's great news. And thanks, Debbie. I also, as an update to the Board of Education and the community, we concluded on Friday the 1st of November, the feedback surveys, which were being sent to the Church Street Elementary School community every Friday for four Fridays. That data set with over 300 respondents is in the process right now of being analyzed. And really want to thank everybody who took the time to respond. There is a lot of information to bring back, and hopefully, we'll be able to have that all processed for December, but I might come back and I might ask for more time, dependent upon how quickly we're able to move through. And we're also, at the same time, again, coordinating to make sure that before and after care is solid for next year. One of those things that we need to do is to have an enrollment period that begins sooner for parents and guardians who may be interested in participating in either before or after care, not just at Church Street, but in all the elementary schools. As I had mentioned, the Education Pathway will go a long way if the students continue to express interest, which I do believe they will, in providing that service for all of our families. I also wanted to just follow up, because we had talked about this at our last meeting, the Board of Education's emails, as you know, they're all operational. You should all be set. And what I did was I went back and made sure that I resent, just in case any particular board member hadn't received one, all emails, because I know that was expressed as a concern. Policy Committee is going to be looking at cell phone policy in schools for the 25-26 academic year. One policy we're looking at is, in a way, for the, not so much day, but for class. Look, we know that cell phones are, technology is ubiquitous, it's everywhere. And we also know that it's very, very difficult to pay attention if you're also engaging with something else, whether it be a cellphone or iPad, or whatever the case may be. When we're in class, we need to make sure that we're paying attention and engage with the material and all the discussion and everything that's happening in class. And we also need to respect our students, particularly our upperclassmen, in their ability to navigate the use of technology in a responsible fashion that doesn't impede with their learning. So we will be at the Policy Committee level, taking a look at some model policy over the next couple of months. I've also asked our student liaison to engage with their classmates to get feedback as well. And so we'll have more for you there, but I do believe that, you know, moving forward, the conversation really needs to be about the healthy use of technology as a tool, and less about, you know, punitive measures to not use. So is there going to be a time in the school day where you can pull your phone out and check your messages? Yeah, of course, just not during calc. You know, because, you know, that time is limited and it's very, very valuable. So more to come on that, but that's definitely something we're going to be bringing forward. I would also like to express my gratitude publicly, again, to Commissioner Rosa. SED continues to listen to the local school districts related to our concerns pertaining to foundation aid and support. Of course, the Board of Regents just recently received recommendations for the new graduation requirements that will be coming. requirements that will be coming online over the course of several years. So, there's a lot happening at SED, but even despite all of, all of that consideration, the Commissioner always finds time to listen to her colleagues in the field, and we're appreciative of that. We're also appreciative of the ability to meet directly with SED related to our potential partnership with Southern Westchester Bosse to offer career and technical education here in the White Plains City School District, that we're very excited about. We have a meeting set up for Thursday with assistant commissioners, where we'll be talking about our, our vision for this partnership, as well as with Dr. Coles and Southern Westchester Bosse. So, it's great, and it's very exciting, and we'll be happy to, to share an update as soon as we have it with, not just the board, but also our community. Finally, and, and very important, PTA, you can still join if you haven't yet joined, please do, they're doing amazing work, all, all focused on our children, every bit of it, and we're really grateful for that. And, of course, wishing everybody a very, very happy and healthy Thanksgiving holiday that's going to be coming up. And as a reminder, the holidays are not always easy for everybody, for a variety of reasons. And maybe there are folks in this room that do not look forward to the holidays. One of the messages that, that we're, we have in the past, and we will continue to share with our school community, is that we have resources available for students, families, who may be in need, whatever that need may be. So, we'll, we'll continue to spread that. And we, as we know, we have amazing community partners in this school district that we're able to interconnect with and liaise with to support our families, whatever they, they may be working through. So, we'll be mindful of that, moving through the holiday season. At some point in time, it may get cool. But.
Or rain.
For, for the, for the time being. Or rain. For the time being, I am not angry at, at the mild temperatures, because you all know, I do not like the snow.
It's the only thing we disagree.
So, I'll take it for as long as I can get it. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Ricker. And you know, I would just add this, that, you know, we do a lot in terms of going to things, and we don't always even remember, because I think it's such second nature, and it's fine that we don't remember, we were at trunk-or-treat together at the high school.
No, and you reminded, and you reminded me, none of us touched on.
It was 80 degrees?
We, Central Hospital had their 50th anniversary, we attended that.
Did you say that?
Yeah, yeah.
I wasn't listening.
Okay. Okay.
Say it again.
So, next, we're going to move into our public participation portion of our agenda. So, we will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person. And also, and you know, I know sometimes it can be hard, you know, when you're up here, and you're, you know, you're participating in our public participation section of the meeting, and it looks like we're not responding directly. However, please know that we do hear, we take notes, and that our cabinet, gentlemen in the cabinet, will be willing and happy to talk with you on any matter, you know, relating to public participation, or any questions that you have, but just to be sure that you know that we hear what you're saying. So, with that, if we have any public participation, please step to the podium and say your name, state your name and your address.
At the last BOE meeting on October 15th, another parent and I, who was here tonight, spoke against the possible change to Church Street's start time. We noted that the survey sent out by the district was not a sound evaluation tool, because the most critical question, are you for or against this change, yes or no, is not asked. Despite our request for the survey to be revised, it remained unchanged. It also closed early, and there were several days where people couldn't respond. As a result, we developed a change.org petition to be signed by members of the Church Street community, who oppose this change. Since the petition's release on October 28th, 332 people have signed the survey, over 50% signed in the first 24 hours, making our opposition to this possible change decisive and clear. On October 28th, the district hosted a virtual community budget forum. During the call, it was emphasized that protecting the instructional core is one of the district's guiding principles. Anyone engaged in the education system, whether it be a teacher, administrator, B O E member, service provider, student, parent guardian, et cetera, understands that protecting the instructional core of any school will be all that takes place in the classroom. A substantial shift in a child's routine, for example, would directly impact their mental state when they enter the classroom and their ability to retain information and learn, no matter how strong the instruction is. This proposed change to Church Street's start time will alter the routines of many Church Street students, resulting in negative impacts in their learning, and is in direct opposition to what the district claims is one of its guiding principles. Yet, here we are with this option still on the table, and no alternatives provided publicly by the superintendent and assistant superintendent to meet the budget gap. What are the other ways this budget could be cut? We need these examples. It is no secret that many Church Street families oppose this change. I, for one, have made my stance on this very clear. However, I'd be remiss not to mention that I've often felt like I've been screaming respectfully into a void. On September 17th, I emailed Dr. Ricker, who responded, and all the BOE members. I emailed the general BOE email address on the district's website. No one from the BOE responded. At the October 15th BOE meeting, it was noted that the board members don't actually see the emails sent to the general email address on its website, under the heading Board of Education Contact Information. On October 11th, I emailed Charlie Nora separately about this issue, and to date, I have received no response. And finally, on October 16th, I emailed the BOE members again, except this time to their individual BOE emails, and all I received to date is a one-line acknowledgement of receipt, with no meaningful feedback from Ms. Eller. Again, I ask, how do we get in touch with you, and more importantly, how do we get meaningful feedback from you? Lastly, I want to make something, I'm not speaking to the board, I want to speak to the White Plains community. If you have children attending school in the district, this fight may not pertain to you, and that's fine, but this is still your Board of Education. So, please take note of our experience, and always make your voices heard, when advocating for what's best for your children, their peers, and your community. Whether that be voting when BOE elections come around, speaking up at BOE meetings, sharing your points of view on social media, and/or starting a petition that makes it quantitatively clear how those affected by this issue feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public participation? Thank you. Thank you for your, your participation. Next, we're going to move to our summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions?
Just to point out to Dr. Ricker that on page 10, there's a ski club happening, so we need a little snow. But anyway.
There is a ski club, and I do want the snow for the ski club on the mountain.
Would you like me to do the donation?
Yeah, yeah. Grateful, again, as always, for, for the following donations. $70 donation for George Washington School from the Blackbaud Giving Fund. Also, the following donations are from the City of White Plains Climate Action Fund, $4,400 for the White Plains High School Gardening Club, $4,860 for the STEM Club of White Plains High School. Amazing donations. A donation from the National Center for Educational Statistics by the U.S. Department of Education, of up to $2,200 for the 2024-2025 academic year for Church Street Elementary School. A $250 donation for the Dorothy Ann Peters Memorial Scholarship from Andrea Stern. A $200 donation for the Philip Barnett Memorial Scholarship from Mr. and Mrs. Ed Dumphy. Donors Choose has selected to fund the classroom project for teacher Kimberly Fleming at the high school, which includes the following: one-go direct conductivity probe, one-go direct optical dissolved oxygen probe, and one lab book water quality verne. And by the way, let me just make mention that the science research, research students will be coming to present to the Board of Education later in the year, and Ms. Fleming, of course, works, works with those students. And they've also submitted a number of applications to this year's Regeneron Science Awards as well. And the following donations are from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools, an $18,000 donation grant to help fund the Beyond Broadway Dance Program in all five elementary schools in the '24-'25 academic year, and a $900 grant to the sale program in the high school to fund tickets for students to attend a performance of Hairspray at the White Plains Performing Arts Center this December. Thank you so much for these amazing donations.
Yeah, we are very, we are very fortunate that our season of thanks is all year because of our generous community.
Indeed.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move to our individual act, action items. The first one is the recommended approval of the administrative appointment of Christopher DiMatteo in the area of Director of Secondary Teaching, Learning, and Assessment. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's a moment of truth right before the vote. Chris, thanks for being here this evening, and also, thank you for your interest in becoming part of the White Plains City School District family. Mr. Pepper, thanks, as well as the committee, conducting the search, Dr. Hand, and all the committee members, and we're really excited at the prospect of your joining the team, and everything goes all right. But, but thank you again, and welcome.
Oh, so, I thought we were going to leave this till the end. No, sorry.
Table it.
Table it, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Do you want to say something for, for a minute? Do you feel that you want to say anything for a minute?
Yeah, I just want to. Microphone. Is that all right, Mr. Shepherd? I had it. I wasn't going to let him talk without the microphone.
Thank you so much, President Eller, Superintendent Dr. Ricker, Board of Education, my administrative colleagues, and everyone listening. Really, all I want to express tonight is gratitude, and the fact that I'm really excited to be here. All throughout the process and every interaction I've had has reinforced the notion that White Plains is student-first, and that we have great minds in education that are going to move forward in innovative way. So, thank you. It's with, very much with gratitude that I move into this position. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Next, we have a resolution that an employee will be directed to provide information to the, to the district at a, at a time and place to be determined by the superintendent or his designatedee. And we will be communicating in writing to said employee. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we will move on to Board Committee Reports. We had, we had our HR meeting, and of course, we don't discuss the details of those meetings as they are confidential matters, but we do meet each month, and just wanted to say that. Also, we had our Finance Committee meeting, and we discussed our investments, their trajectory, and just really an analysis of how, how our investments are working for us to preserve our instructional core. I'm going to leave it to Craig, if you want to add anything else?
No, it continues to be with a lot of foresight by Dr. Fakari Otash, who is leading the effort, where the returns for the school district in what has been invested continues to grow. It's a very conservative set of investments that we have, very purposely, and we continue to really look out for the best interest of the school district with these investments.
Thank you, thank you. Any other report out?
Yeah, we had curriculum, during which we looked at extensive data, in terms of how our students are doing, and to use that data then to, to focus on certain areas and direct areas, and we had a similar meeting with special ed. We looked at, we looked at data, and we also got an update on the independent review that's going on in special, special ed right now.
I'll just add. Yeah, I'll add to curriculum. I know that, I think, data is embargoed, is that the right word? I couldn't remember.
Jilz, I was going to say.
Okay, so embargoed by the state, so it's not to be released yet, so it was a preliminary look at, at the data. Also, Superintendent's Conference Day on Election Day was very rich, with lots of learning that went on at the elementary level, secondary level, a lot of work on, on STEM, and so, and, and thank you to Kathy Barpulis, who also attended the Curriculum Committee meeting. And just lots of things going on. There's an Elementary Curriculum Committee that's been meeting, and ELA Committee that's looking at resources aligning with the New York State Next Generation reading standards. So, more to come.
Any, any other report out? So, also, the, the district, our District Wellness Committee met, that date changed, so, but I know that we have, we have three more, so I'll be set with those. But it's really, for me, great to participate on that initiative, because I do, I like to hear what our students are thinking as well with regard to, to wellness, and how we feed them, and, and how we nurture them, and do they like it? Like what you get, you know? It's important, too, so just wanted to call that out. Last, but not least, oops, I think we're good? Oh, yes, okay. Before we go into a brief executive meeting, I want to say hi again to John Shepherd, back there, making sure that we are communicating effectively with our community. Thank you. And with that, may I have a moment to adjourn into a brief exec committee to discuss matters?
Negotiations, yeah, negotiations.
Negotiations, okay.
A motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Meredith Kavanaugh, good to see you.
Thank you.